So we'll get started. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Tiverton Town Council, Monday, February 24, 2020, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible)
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk? Counselor Perry.
Present.
Counselor Edwards.
Present.
Counselor Clark.
Present.
Counselor DiMederos.
Present.
Counselor Hilton.
Present.
Counselor Cook.
Present.
Counselor Driggs.
Present.
All present.
On to the consent agenda. Item A, approval of town council minutes, February 10, 2020, regular meeting. Counselor Edwards abstains. February 10, 2020, executive session. Counselor Edwards abstains. January 29, 2020, special meeting. Counselor DiMederos abstains. February 4, 2020, special meeting. Counselor DiMederos and Edwards abstain. February 11, 2020, special meeting. Counselor Edwards and Driggs abstain. And February 15, special meeting. Counselor DiMederos and Perry abstain. Item B, acknowledged receipt of minutes from boards and commissions, one set from the Board of Canvassers and one set from the Historical Preservation Advisory Board. Item C, acknowledged receipt of reports, the town administrator, police and fire department overtime reports for January 2020, from the town treasurer, Denise Sarette, the January budget and revenue reports, from the town administrator, department monthly reports January 2020. Item D, acknowledgement, receipt of correspondence, Roger A. Benis, who owns the land west of Main Road, and the Smithfield School Committee, a resolution recognizing Public Schools Week. And finally, item E, approval of tax assessor abatements, of which there are none. Would any counselor like to remove something from the consent agenda? Mrs. Driggs?
4A4.
4A4? Anyone else?
Madam President.
Yes, John?
Motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda, minus 4A4.
Second.
All in favor?
Yep, I'm sorry.
Okay. Counselor Driggs, 4A4?
It's probably really petty, but I just would like a period after Counselor Perry and members present just put a period after Counselor Perry because it sort of went into a run on and it was hard to distinguish who was present, who were absent. That's it.
In that case, do I have a motion to accept 4A4? Some move.
Second.
All in favor? Open public forum. I don't know if anybody's signed up. Any need? Anyone sign up for the open public forum this evening?
No.
Okay, no sign up. In that case, moving right along to presentations, the Union Public Library. So, the Union Public Library is celebrating its 200th anniversary this year, and I have a proclamation that I would like to read, and I might ask Gail Lawrence if she'd like to come up as well. So I'm going to read this proclamation and then ask the council for a vote. The Town of Tiverton, Rhode Island Town Council proclamation, "The Union Public Library has been uniting readers since 1820, whereas the Union Public Library began as the Union Society on March 24, 1820, when its founders, in recognition of the many and important advantages derived from the establishment of a social library, adopted the society's first constitution and elected officers, Simeon Borden, pardon G. Seabury, and Frederick Almy, appointed his librarian William Almy, and chose managers Cyrus Gray, Robert Gray, and Abraham Bran. It was housed in the Seabury Store and membership was $5. Whereas in 1837, the collection grew to include fiction titles rather than exclusively nonfiction, and today contains a well-curated collection of thousands of items across a broad spectrum of disciplines and available to all Rhode Island residents through the statewide circulation system. And, whereas in 1860, the membership library was reorganized and became known as the Tiverton Union Library, and was located in the Benjamin Seabury House with Mr. Seabury as librarian, and in 1888, members formed the Union Public Library Association, and the library became free to all residents. And whereas the library occupied several locations in the historic Four Corners neighborhood during its early years before acquiring the Good Templars Hall in 1914, and receiving a bequest of the land it currently occupies from the Potter family in 1923. And whereas in 1923, the Library Association registered Union Public Library as a nonprofit corporation with the state of Rhode Island and Providence plantations for the purposes of conducting a public library and for any other literary and educational purposes. And whereas in 1965, the Union Public Library became affiliated with Essex Library under state mandate and began receiving essential state services as part of Tiverton Library Services. And, whereas the library houses an excellent collection of children's books and an inviting space for their use, supporting children's literacy with storytimes and other educational experiences. And whereas in 2013, the Union Public Library Association became a recognized 501(c)(3) charitable organization to support the operation of a free library and reading room for the community in Tiverton Four Corners and to continue maintenance of the building and grounds thereof. And whereas, the Union Public Library is a vibrant, active community resource beloved by many, which attracts visitors from near and far with interest in local history, genealogy, and its other special collections. And whereas, the library provides community-centered programs and events which promote social interactions and offer volunteer opportunities for many residents throughout the year as library assistants, as workers at the annual and popular book, bacon, yard sale, and at many other events. Therefore, be it resolved that we, the Tiverton Town Council, proclaim 2020 as the 200th anniversary year of the second oldest library in Newport County, and acknowledge the many dedicated individuals who have generously provided the time and resources needed over 20 decades to maintain this valued and enduring institution in Tiverton, and have thus made this 200th anniversary celebration possible." Do I have a motion to so adopt this proclamation? Some move.
Second.
And a second? All in favor? Congratulations.
Well, thank you. If I had suspenders, I'd be feeling very, very proud. I think the community should be very, very proud that we have the second oldest library in Newport County, and in fact, probably one of the oldest in all of Rhode Island. Apparently, East Providence Ladies' Reading Room beats us out with an 1819 start, and of course, the Redwood Library beats us out by over 100 years. But we do thank you very much for taking the time to acknowledge this accomplishment and to honor the library. I'd like to just point out a couple of events that are going to happen very soon, one of which is a bicentennial timeline that will be displayed here throughout the month of March. It was generated by, with a lot of work, by Susan Anderson, and there will be a reception on Sunday afternoon from 2:00 to 4:00. So we really would like to invite everyone to join us for that and come and see the display. I think you'll be very impressed. Another event that we're very proud of will happen on the actual day that the gentlemen formed, met to form their constitution, and that is on March 24, and that will be an amicable church, and an invitation that looks like this was presented to all council members. The event is free and open to the public, but because of space limitations, we very much need reservations. Information about how to make a reservation will be on this piece of paper. So we hope people will attend. There will be two displays at the Tiverton Public Library, one in the history case, that display case, and also one in the case at the entrance, that will tell you more about the Union Public Library and its interesting history. So, I don't want to take any more of your time, but I, we all, on behalf of the Union Public Library Association and its members, we thank you very much for your support.
Thank you, Gail. On behalf of the citizens of Tiverton, we thank you very much, the Union Public Library Association. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just in case you want to frame it and add it to the archives.
Absolutely, why not? The archives are growing, of course. Thank you again.
Public hearings advertised, Cultural Survival, Dana Laura, approval of sound variants for the Cultural Survival Bazaar at Tiverton Four Corners Arts Center, July 25 and 26, 2020, from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and approval of a special event permit, non-advertised. Hello, welcome.
Hi, thank you.
You've been here before.
Yes.
Same event as before?
Same event. This will be our 20th year, all the same. The one thing I wanted to include this year was, I will be here through the meeting, and I would love to speak with anyone who'd like to collaborate regarding art in Tiverton, getting artists involved and volunteers involved. We've been here 20 years, we'd love to have more Tiverton involvement, but otherwise, that's all.
That's great. Well, luckily for you, there are some members of the Arts Committee who are actually sitting in the audience, and some local artists who are here, so I think you should check with them.
Thank you, thank you.
Have you talked with the police department?
Yes.
Because normally, I know there's a detail there.
Yes, we work closely with Chief Jones, and last year, we opened up a parking lot down the way and worked closely with the police department.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Since this is a, since this is a public hearing, is there any member of the public who would like to speak on the sound variance? Any member of the public? One more time, I have to ask three times, one more? Okay. In that case, are there any other questions from the council? Do I have a motion?
Madam President.
Yes, John?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the sound variance for the Cultural Survival Bazaar at Tiverton Four Corners Arts Center, 3852 Main Road, for July 25 to 26, 2020, from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and approval of the special event permit.
Second. Just going to ask the solicitor, I'm just going to ask Mr. Solicitor, does it matter if they all go on one motion or do they have to be presented?
No, if they were advertised as one.
In that case, there's a motion in a second, unless there's any other discussion. All in favor?
Thank you.
Best of luck this year.
Thank you so much.
The council is, sitting as a board of licensing, John Skripyak, 48 Island View Drive, requests renewal of private detective license, subject to meeting all legal requirements. I don't know if Mr. Skripyak is here. Madam Clerk, can you verify that Mr. Skripyak has met all the legal requirements?
Yes, this is just a renewal.
I figured. Okay. In that case?
Madam President.
Yes, John?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the private detective license for John Skripyak, 48 Island V Drive.
Second.
Just a motion in a second? All in favor? Appointments and resignations, annual tree warden. We did have two applicants. We interviewed one, last meeting, I believe it is. Is Mr. Hathaway here this evening? Mr. Hathaway, would you mind coming up just for a minute? And you're welcome to sit if you'd like.
That's fine.
Okay. If you could just tell us a little bit about your interest in applying for the position and your experience?
Born and raised in Tiverton, Hathaway Farms, Os Power Avenue. I mean, I've been in town my whole life. It's what I do for a living. I own J.D.H. Tree Service. It's what I love to do. I love working with trees and landscaping and whatnot.
And you have your arborist license, yes?
I'm in the process of reinstating it because I let it expire.
Okay.
I have a paper in my pocket if you want to see that, but it's not something I'm asked for a lot, doing tree removal, the arborist side of it, but...
Yeah. It's just that the state makes this a requirement for the tree wardens. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Hathaway?
Anything? I have one question. It may be an ignorant one, I don't know. I noticed on your application that you worked, you owned your own company.
Yes.
And you qualified it as tree removal, and I'm just curious, were you also involved in landscaping and, you know, planting areas as, not just tree removal?
Right. We do everything.
Yes, okay.
Anyone else? Okay. Mr. Hathaway, thank you very much. Since we have two applicants, our normal policy then is that we'll vote at the next meeting, but thank you very much for applying.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bids and requests for proposals. Chief Malo requests vote award a bid for EMS third-party billing services to Dawson Group, East Providence, Rhode Island. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening. Madam President, members of the council, we're recommending that the Dawson Group be awarded the contract for third-party billing. Dawson, of the four submissions, Dawson Group is the only Rhode Island-based company. If it matters, the owners are residents of the town of Tiverton here. The three of the other, of the other companies, one from New Jersey and the other from Minnesota, I'm not really even sure if they have any clients here in Rhode Island. Dawson Group does the majority of business. The majority of their clients are Rhode Island fire departments. The other company, ComStar, they do have some Rhode Island companies, but they are, they do most of their work in Massachusetts as well. Just through my interaction with colleagues from across the state, majority of fire departments do use the Dawson Group. They're very happy with the, with their services. They're very accessible. The owner of the company, Kim Dawson, she represents the vendors at the monthly meetings of the Rhode Island Fire Chiefs. So, again, very easily accessible, very easy to see, and should you have any questions and whatnot. Also, the different fire departments that I have spoken to, a couple of them did move from different companies to the Dawson Group, and they had reported that revenue went up when they switched to that, to the Dawson Group. So, again, everybody's very happy with them, and that would be our recommendation as well.
Thank you. Madam President? Yes?
Chief, so they, out of what they collect, they get a 6% profit from it?
Yes.
Okay. I'm really concerned, because our revenue number for this year was supposed to be $750,000. It, $650,000, excuse me. It doesn't appear that we've collected very little since July. As a matter of fact, we've collected 14%, so the remaining balance of what was projected is $550,000. So if we would have been collecting up until this point the way that we usually do, they'd get less of a percentage. So why weren't we collecting? Like, we added an extra secretary, which I understand's been out since August.
Yes.
But our regular secretary was doing it prior to that. I was bringing in much more than this. So it looks like this stopped at some point? Could you explain why?
It did, only because in the absence of the second person, you know, surely the secretary is, she was focused on the normal administrative functions that she has in terms of running the fire department and whatnot.
What concerns me, she was doing, running...
Madam President, we're off the agenda topic of awarding a bid, so...
All right.
I just want to caution you, I know you might have concerns about how much money you've collected, but the item before you is you're awarding a bid at the recommendation of the fire chief as to billing collections in the future.
Well, then I would like to put this on the next agenda so we can discuss it on why we haven't been doing third-party billing, and that we, right now, I'm very concerned that our revenue is down $555,000.
Madam President, I would move that we accept the bid of Dawson Group at the recommendation of Chief Malo.
Second.
Any other discussion? I actually do have a little bit of a concern about this. Because we went out to bid, and I'm not an expert in this, but my understanding is that we are supposed to be accepting the lowest responsive bid?
Lowest responsible bidder, correct.
The lowest...
That doesn't necessarily mean the lowest bidder.
It doesn't mean the lowest bidder, but it means the lowest responsive bidder.
Responsible, I think you said.
Well, responsive meaning...
Responsible, irresponsible.
The bidder that meets the criteria. And while I can appreciate and am happy to do business with a local business, I'm not sure that, I'm a little worried that there isn't anything here that tells me, from a responsiveness point of view, in other words, they meet all the criteria, why ComStar is not a qualified bidder? And...
I mean, I can interject a little if you want, but it's based upon the experience, the recommendations that are received from other departments, it all goes into play. So you don't necessarily have to get the lowest bidder.
Right.
So it's all those factors, and Chief is, I think, articulating why he believes that they're the lowest, most responsive bidder, based upon their history of working with other communities in the state, their location within Rhode Island, East Providence, as well as apparently, they live in Tiverton, I guess, so that, it all plays, it can all play into it. There's nothing, there's nothing tawdry about taking them because of those factors, but that's up to the council to decide.
Okay, and...
You have my discretion, as long as the bidding process was fair and open and whatnot.
Okay, that's what I want to clarify, because I don't want somebody to come back to us and say...
You have a lot, that lowest responsible, responsive bidder is a very elastic term.
Okay.
Well, we didn't get any backup except for this, so we don't really know why.
We didn't, this whole book was...
Oh, there is.
On each one.
Because it also, I mean, it's also a difference in money on, you know, on a half-a-million-dollar contract, it's a $12,000 difference that we will pay them $12,000 more a year than we would pay the other company. So, you know, $12,000 is $12,000. But the other question that I have about these companies, and it does relate a little bit to where we are, is do you think one of these companies would be more successful in trying to recoup the unbilled revenue? Do, in other words, do they understand how much revenue hasn't been billed yet?
Yes. I've had that conversation a couple of times, and I did want to address that for, you know, to the council and whatnot. The, in some of the conversations that we've had, you can go back, as far as some of the billing goes, depending on what the company is, Blue Cross, Blue Shield, Medicaid, Medicare, some of them you can go back as far as a year in the billing. So, it's certainly our intent to get them on board and get them, you know, get it going as soon as we possibly can, so we can recoup the money, and hopefully, we're going to be right where we should be.
Okay, so, so they're ready to go right away and could start their...
Yeah. I mean, I said, I mean, in all fairness, I suspect they all are, but, but yes.
Okay. And you're pretty comfortable that the $12,000 difference is worth it?
Again, I, just through the interaction and the conversations that I've had with everybody, I talked to at least two different, two different individuals that said, one in particular said when he went to the Dawson Group, his revenue went up by 14%. So I think that's significant when you're talking close to $1 million.
Okay. And other than the percentage we pay them, that's all, there's no other fee, there's no other startup costs, it's just the percentage?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, just, just one thing. It is almost, from $15,000, I think, to $20,000 was paying for the part-time person. So I think it's kind of a wash. And they're experts at it.
Understood. I was just asking the difference between the...
No, I know, it's $12,000, but...
Right. But the cost is actually more than the part-time person?
Because it's 12%.
Because the...
6%.
6%.
Because at 6%, it's $30,000 a year, still. So it is more than what we were paying the part-time person to do this, so. Okay, anybody else? Just a motion in a second, all in favor? Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Get that money, Chief.
General Business, Joan Shabbett, Tiverton Days, 2020, request approval of Tiverton Days, 2020, town-wide celebrations, June 26, 25, July 26, oh, July 25, July 26, to be town-sponsored event, subject to meeting all legal requirements. Hello, Joan.
Hi. Good evening, council. Just wanted to get this, since there's been quite a bit of confusion and issues going around, especially the last meeting that I attended for this particular topic. I provided an agenda item. I also provided some backup with the last six years of approvals for town-sponsored events for Tiverton Days or whatever name that it was under. At one point, it was Celebrate Tiverton, then until Tiverton celebrates Tiverton Days, and Tiverton just dropped that front part off and became Tiverton Days, and this year, it's Tiverton Days 2020. It's a, basically, it's the same event as last year, with the exception of the family event at Cassett Fields will be at the end of June instead of the Friday night of that particular weekend. It's a lot of work, and the volunteers need a little rest between these events, and it spreads out the activity so that it becomes, provides more activities for the families. The July 25 and 26, that would be the parade, starting in the morning, set up at 9:00, 9:30, starting at 10:00 and ending approximately 11:00, 11:30 at Little Bear. And then in the afternoon, we have a plan to have a family event at the library. Last year, it was Monoc Butterflies. This year, it will be Honey Bees.
Oh, my God.
Are we going to have bees, Mrs. Palatier?
Yeah.
Yeah? Okay.
I can always provide them.
I'm bringing my heavy pen.
That would become the destination recreation for Monoc Butterflies.
Okay.
It's up in the air whether we'll have a scavenger hunt again this year. We might have that as a separate event on a separate day.
That was fun.
Or it could possibly be an online event, so we're looking into that as a possibility. And then on Sunday, beach yoga, we would like to have beach yoga again at Grinnell's, and then the fire department has their open house scheduled for that afternoon, or that morning into afternoon. I'm not bringing any sound variances or any special event forms or applications, because we want to get through this to see that we're all on the same page and that the town is supportive of these events, and that's what we're here for. So, we are requesting approval for this to be considered a town-sponsored event so that we can, that the town recognizes that it's a good event and has the, we have the ability to be under the town's insurance. As we did, it was documented, actually in June of 2018, it was specifically in the meeting minutes. We have looked into, or members of the committee have looked into insurance, and it is expensive. And as far as, I think, Madam President, you mentioned the tulip program, that's for events that are on, specifically on town property, and some of these events, particularly the parade, would not be on town property, it would be actually on the state, state road. So, before we move forward, we can't get approval for any parade until we get approval from the town, so everything basically is at this point. It starts here, before we can move forward with any other actions. So we want to make sure that we have all the issues out on the table and identify what those are and what we can do to mitigate those.
Madam President? I had a couple of questions. John, I was reading your, obviously, your backup, and it wasn't clear to me, I gather, I saw again that somebody claimed that it was covered by the trust in terms of insurance, but I wasn't sure of the reason for that. And secondly, I'm also concerned, and I don't, you haven't mentioned this right now, but I assume it's part of your question. but I assume it's part of your question, whether, I have problems with what seems to be happening in the past of donations being accepted by the town, by the treasurer. I mean, I think you're a 501(c)(3), even though it's kept in a separate account. That, I have some concern, I actually would like, if the solicitor had any opinion about this.
The organization is not a 501(c)(3).
Didn't it used to be?
No.
Or...
No.
That seemed to be out there somewhere.
The, the first one was basically in 2013, was put on by Tiverton First and the Tiverton Education Foundation. So it started out as being those two organizations, and then it suddenly, it did change. People, over the years, and we actually did have one year where there wasn't any parade or any activities. And then it was picked up again, and it's just a committee. It's not a 501(c)(3).
So when you, when you accept donations, who are the donations made out to?
The town of Tiverton, and it is deposited in the town of Tiverton account for Tiverton celebrates, Tiverton or Tiverton Days, whatever you want to call it. Going back to when I was on the council, that was one of the requirements that we had for it to be a town-sponsored event, that the money would be collected into a town account and paid out of there. Yes.
Actually, just to clarify, that wasn't a requirement of the town, it was a request of the committee at the time. It wasn't, it wasn't, because we don't, I think, maybe before we ask all of our questions here, it might be good, because some of these questions are, I think, legal questions. It sounds to me like the holding of the money and the insurance are kind of the big outstanding question, so I'm going to ask our solicitor if he would like to weigh in and, and give us some feedback on this.
Thank you, Madam President, and members of the council. Let me deal with what I think is the easiest question first, and it's really a policy decision, but I've gone through the ordinances, I don't, we keep on using this term "town-sponsored event", and I don't see anything in the ordinances that makes any event, whether it be this event or other events, a town-sponsored event. So it's kind of a loose term that people use, but it doesn't really have any legal significance. However, this was brought, when I first got on board, we had an initial meeting with the town administrator and I think the town treasurer at the time, at a department, a department head meeting, and this was brought up, that we were using, the town was being, the town was a depository of these funds, of basically what is a private group. It's a group of citizens, no question about it, that's putting on an event that benefits the town. But at the end of the day, it's a private group. And as a, to me, that just raises all, a lot of red flags, because we're basically using the town as a clearinghouse, banking, checking account, whatever, and I just don't think from a policy perspective, that's a good idea. Not only from the liability that it may create from the town, we were paying, we were paying vendors from this account, and I don't know what the procedure was, how to pay vendors, or how we got proof of vendors, or there were reimbursements being made to other members of the committee or to other members who had fronted monies. And to me, you know, the town is not a bank. The town, in my opinion, the town repository should be used for town taxpayers' funds and other funds that we may get, federal government funds, or those type of funds, state funds, but not for a private group. So I raised that issue right from the very beginning, I know it was done in the past, doesn't make it right. And my job as the attorney for the town is to protect the town from liability. So I believe, as a matter of policy, now the council could overrule me if they want to, but I just don't think it's a good idea that private groups be allowed to use the town treasury as a clearinghouse to pay their bills or whatnot. Because if the, we can do it for your group, I don't know what the next group will say, who might want to come into the town and say, you know, we're having this event and we would like to use the town treasury. I don't know how we say yes to one and no to another, which raises a whole other issues whether or not we're discriminating against different groups as to, as to what their purpose may be. So that's the first issue, if anyone wants to discuss that further. But that's, from my perspective, I don't recommend it, I don't think it's a good idea. I don't understand why a group, I don't know how much money they raise, but, you know, they can't get a quick checking account from a, from a credit union or something like that. There are plenty of small banks around that might be able to help you out, but I just don't think it's fair or appropriate that town use, be used as a repository and/or clearinghouse for a private group.
You currently have the Garden Club also has an account.
I wasn't aware of that, but I would say the same, I would say the same thing. That doesn't change, that actually, that makes my blood pressure rise, but it doesn't change my opinion.
I was, I was under the understanding for the Garden Club, though, that the $500 was for the beautification of Downy, the Doughboy, and a couple of other spots that the DPW didn't have time to do. If, if that's not the case, then I guess there's a problem with that, too.
Well, I, I mean... But it's money we budgeted through our budget, it's not donations being brought in, I think, anyway.
I don't know.
I'm not sure that, that...
For this, so, so you solicit, sorry, so you solicit, you know, you personally, your group solicits donations from individuals, they write the check out to the town of Tiverton.
Correct.
Or the town of Tiverton Days, whatever, and then we, then you deposit it into the treasurer, and she keeps a separate account for you.
Correct.
Basically, serving as a bank, basically. Basically, serving as a depository for your group, for the group. And then bills get paid, you incur debt, I don't know, give me an example, a vendor, you buy traffic cones for the parade, I guess. And then you, then, then a bill is submitted, and then we pay, we pay the bill? The town signs a check to pay the bill.
Right.
But we didn't incur the cost, the town didn't incur that cost, a private group incurred that cost.
Paying the maintenance workers at, at the school for the school events. Yeah, janitorial services.
How does that affect their ability to get insurance?
When they come to the parade, right?
That's a separate issue?
Yes.
About the insurance, that's...
Yeah.
Insurance is a separate issue, we'll talk about that in a second, but I just want to... So that's, that's from my perspective, I know it's been done in the past, doesn't make it right. I just don't think it's a good idea.
So it'd be simply that they would just have to have their own checking account and write out their own bills?
Let me just give you a hypothetical. Suppose something happens, like someone says, "I gave $1,000", and we only booked 750 on this account, and now all of a sudden there's $250 missing. What do we do? Do we, do the person say, "Well, I gave 1,000, and you only booked 250, where's the 250?" Do we have this big investigation as to where this money went? Or someone says, "I submitted a bill for $500, but I only got paid 400, and now we're going to use town resources to figure out whether that person was adequately paid or not. Oh, I paid in cash on this one, but he only got the balance of 400." It's just, it's just not...
It's asking for trouble.
It's asking for trouble.
Yeah.
And that's, that's my concern.
Yeah.
And I'm just not aware of it being done in any other community. I will tell you that it was done in one socket when I was the solicitor there for another different group, and we put into it right away, because it's just, it's just not good accounting practice to use the town.
So is it an issue for you guys to have a checking account or a...
I'd have to go back to the committee for discussion and the vote.
Mrs. Moran is raising her hand, would you like to come up and say something?
I'm going to help her. It's my recollection that when we got into this thing last year, that it was a stipulation for us to put money in the town before it was going to be town-sponsored. And that was a requirement of being town-sponsored, is to put our money in the town treasury. That's my recollection of how it happened.
I, I have to respectfully disagree, because this did come up. I don't know if it was last year or the year before, but this actually came up, and at the time, and I don't, you know, shame on the town, I don't think anything got followed up on it, but there was a council meeting, because when Mrs. Shabbat put in all this backup for these various council meetings, I went and looked, and at one of those meetings, the town administrator was going to work with, this was sort of raised as this is problematic. And he was going to work with the committee to see if there couldn't be someplace else where the funds could be held. So I'm, I, it was never a requirement, I think it sort of, kind of morphed into that. And, but it wasn't, it was never a requirement. We don't have any, as the solicitor said, we don't have any requirements for town-sponsored events, because we don't actually have an ordinance or any, there's...
Right, and, and in those same things you just referred to, it seems like they tie in something being town-sponsored as an ability to get on the insurance. But if we don't really have a town-sponsored vehicle to do that, then it's fictitious.
And this has come up, and we should probably have one, this has come up before, that we should, you know, create some sort of policy, so...
Let's talk in general.
Madam President, Pardon Gray, is that a town event?
Nope.
No, no. It's a, I mean, we give Pardon Gray their permits, they get their, they come and get their permits. I mean, the town loves the event, but they, they handle everything.
They have their own insurance and everything?
They, they have their own insurance, their own financing, their own everything. I mean, actually, I don't know of any other event that asks for that. I mean, every other event that we have, or that we permit, whether it's Pardon Gray or Sing Out Against Hunger, or whatever it is, they all have their own financing, and they have their own insurance.
So the issue of insurance is always an important issue. And this, the idea of a town-sponsored event, we come under the town's insurance policy, is kind of a misnomer. The only people who are insured under the town's policies are those boards and commissions who are actually appointed by the town council or the town administrator, who then actually discharge functions on behalf of the town. In other words, the zoning board, the planning board, perhaps the recreation committee. Those boards, those boards are town-sanctioned, town-chartered boards. That doesn't necessarily mean that you cannot use town property for your event. The town does permit you to use town property for this event, I guess the beach and whatnot. And we actually permit you for the parade, even though it's not on town, we actually issue a permit for the parade. However, that doesn't automatically get you under the town's insurance. In fact, the town's insurance policy is very specific as to what boards and commissions they do insure. So the town's property is always insured. So if anyone's using the town's property, it's always insured. Someone gets hurt, they're going to sue the town anyway, because it's on town property. But my understanding is that you're looking for additional insurance above and beyond that for your membership, the steering committee, and for the events itself that you may not be using. And that, that is through the Tulip program that is offered through the trust. But I, but I'm not even convinced, and I called the general counsel today, and he was going to get back to me. I did not hear from him, I'm not convinced that that Tulip policy actually insures your steering committee, because you're not, it's a private group, much like the Rotary Club putting on a road race. They, you don't insure the Rotary just because they put out the group, so. But the town is always protected, because we're insured. If you're using town property, we always have insurance. But it may be, as a, as a condition for the permit, that the town suggests that you get, show proof of insurance, that you basically have a layer of insurance above and beyond what the town offers. And that's generally how that works.
So if something happens at the Cassett School, that's town property? And so if someone gets injured there, then the town's responsible?
Well, if someone gets injured on a pothole that was created by the town, you know, maybe they didn't upkeep the parking lot, yes, it would be the town's responsibility. However, if they trip and fall over a sign that was put there by this group, then they would both...
That's one of them.
Right, so then that's a little different. So the group created the condition, you know, that caused the fall, and so therefore you would probably sue, the town would still be sued.
Yeah.
But the, the group, the group would also probably be sued.
Now, what is this Tulip?
It's called a tenant-user liability insurance policy.
And what does it cost? Because I don't remember it being...
I'm told, as you go online, if, we allow you to use our number, we have a Tulip number that you can use. I was told today by the general counsel of the Intle Trust that it's a $100 policy.
Yeah, that's what I saw.
It's not, not crazily expensive.
Well, someone might have a better memory of this next thing than I do, but at the early days when we were collecting money, Twin Rivers wanted to give us money, and they wrote us a check, they wrote Tiverton Days a check, and we couldn't accept it. They said, "No, you'd have to make it to the town", isn't that the way it happened?
No, no, no. What it was, was we were still in negotiations with Twin Rivers. So we could not accept money from them, because we were still making the decisions over Twin Rivers. That's why.
But we, then they made the check to the town.
No, they didn't.
They didn't, they never did?
No, they never could. No, our lawyer at the time advised that we don't do that kind of business, since we were...
Okay, so last year...
Still bidding and doing all of that, and it appears to be a problem.
And last year when you took their money, it was already a done issue?
No.
Okay, but they made it to the town, they made that check to the town last year.
That's what we're suggesting shouldn't have happened.
But see, last year, we weren't in negotiations.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, okay, that's where it came back from.
But it does, it does, it does create another level of complication for the town in that if a group that isn't part of the town is collecting donations, potentially from somebody who's in front of us, it gets a little...
It did become a problem.
It gets a little fuzzy.
I think everyone, and I can only speak for what I've heard, no one's trying to prevent this event, it's just that it's, I just think there's, as a policy perspective, that you really shouldn't be using the town treasury to collect funds for your group and to put on an event. I think everybody wants the event to succeed, but it's just, there's just a better way of going about it than using the town treasury for it. And then as far as using the town property, again, you can use the town property, we're permitting you to use the town property, that's why you're here before us today. And the town, as a condition of that use, may suggest that you get a Tulip policy, which is within their rights. So basically, it provides another layer of insurance above and beyond what the town already provides. As far as the parade, which I guess is on our state road?
Correct.
So we, we issue the permit for that parade. That puts the town on a little bit of, puts the town in a little position to make sure that it's well-staffed with police officers and whatnot. So that, the town, the town, the town just couldn't issue the permit and say, you know, "Go get 1,000 people out there" and not look the other way. We, that then puts us on notice that we now have an obligation to make sure that...
Yeah.
That it's running properly and that the safety is concerned.
And I'd have to say that this organization has made sure that that occurs. I mean, I've been to these parades since they started, it's very, they do make sure, police are there, it's all taken care of.
We make sure the police are there.
They make sure the police are there.
We hire the police.
They hire the police.
Oh, I see, gotcha.
Yeah. The Tulip, so if somebody was walking at the Cassett School and tripped over a wire that was placed there by a, would it cover...
Probably cover them, it would also cover an extra layer of the town. It would be primary insurance, the town's insurance would be secondary insurance. I don't, I mean, it depends on the policy written, but that's generally how it works.
So, so the question is, would a Tulip policy cover a parade, even if the parade wasn't entirely on town roads?
I can't answer that question, I don't know, it may, I don't know.
Because, I mean, the staging is on a side road, but the, but the parade itself is on a state road.
We closed the road, the town closed the road. So that's, again, the town, only the town can close the road, they can't close the road. So the town takes affirmative steps by issuing the permit, allowing us to take those steps. So it's kind of, that is more of a joint effort, even though it's not a town-sponsored event, it's a joint, you know, we, once we issue that permit, we just can't walk away and say, "Have fun". It's the permit that puts the town on...
So the town approves the event without blessing, and...
Condition upon certain things happening.
And this is just hypothetical, they get a checking account and manages through their selves, and then the Tulip is $100, if we decide we are requiring that.
Question.
Right, am I right, are those the three things?
Well, I'd be concerned about if the Tulip policy applies to the parade. Because it's one thing to have an event at the Cassett Fields, and then it's at, at the beach, Grinnell's Beach, but to have the parade, that's on a combination of state and...
I think you need to check that.
Really, think about it, Joan, though, we've been doing it all these years, we might not have been covered if something happened, which every lawyer that we've had has not given us the impression that we wouldn't be covered, so. It wasn't a question established.
Well, you may be covered, but we have to be worried about what we are covered for.
Correct.
So if you're saying the Tulip policy is going to cover us for our liability at the Cassett Fields and the Grinnell's Beach event, then I have to also be concerned about our coverage that applies on the parade event.
So can she just call, that she can call and ask questions about? Yeah, so you need to find out.
And what difference does it if we are a 501(c)?
Well, taxes, taxes.
Taxes.
Donations are tax-free.
Madam President?
As far as the interaction with the town, interaction with the town, there's a difference.
My question would be, the $100 for the Tulip policy, is that a rider to the trust? Is that, would it be like a rider?
It's a total separate policy.
So it's got nothing to do with the trust, it's not issued by the trust?
It's not issued by the trust, it's a separate policy. The trust has entered into a relationship with this group, but it's a total separate policy.
Okay, so my next question would be, do they have to get a $100 policy for each event? Or would one cover all?
It's a good question, I don't know the answer to that, they could, I don't know the answer to that. That would be up to the policy, but...
But it has not, it's not a rider to the trust?
It's a separate policy. It's a separate policy. It's a separate organization that names, that gives a first layer of coverage before the town's insurance kicks in.
But it's sort of through the trust, Joe, in that...
What's it, it's through the trust?
It's separate from our policy, but... It's separate from our policy, but it, the.
The trust acknowledges it.
The trust acknowledges it, and the trust gives the town a number, and we let the applicant use that number. We say, this is our number, when you do this online, and they type the number in, and that's what, that's what lets them sort of get it.
But we'd have to find out if they need a hundred-dollar tulip policy for each event.
So here's a little, I'm sorry, here's a little blurb.
Well, that's what I'm saying, they'd have to find out.
The blurb on the trust website says, again, it says, it offers coverage limits of $1 million for products, operations, and $1 million in liability for bodily injury and property damage, largely freeing both the third-party user, which is the group, and the trust member, which is us, from losses that may occur during a designated function. The third-party individual group or organization can obtain a quote and/or purchase tulip insurance coverage directly at, and they give a, it's onebeaconentertainment.com, that's the, that's the policy. Onebeaconentertainment.com, that's the name of the, you can get it right online.
So I guess, so I guess the question is whether or not.
Do I, do I need that, that number in order to?
You will need that number, we can probably get that through the administrator's office or the treasurer's office, I think it would happen.
Yeah, would have the number.
One other question. Are you sure it's a hundred dollars? Or do we not know what the figure is?
And speaking with the general counsel today, he said it's very cheap and probably a hundred dollars. Could it be 125? Yeah.
All right, well, I just want to make sure it's not a thousand.
I don't think it's a thousand. Because it's excess, don't forget, it's also, it's first-party coverage above and beyond what we already have, we're already insured for 10 million, so, or some number.
Okay, so, so to recap, I think that we're talking about, we have to go back to the committee and review it being the money being contained in our own personal business account versus the town treasury. And to research this, One Beacon Entertainment Insurance for a tulip policy.
You can find that site right through the Rhode Island Interlethal Trust website.
And I can get the, whatever number is needed through the town administrator or Nancy.
Mary Lou has.
Mary Lou.
This is not uncommon, we have people that lose a tulip on their farm.
Okay, because I know that there are people who have had road races and bike races on effectively state roads, and they get a tulip policy.
It might come to state property as well, I don't know.
Yeah. I do know that, that there are people who have had road ra, on, you know, on main road, and they get a tulip policy, so.
Just a distinction, I don't want to get too far off, but a distinction that I would make of a town-sponsored event, for instance, if there was a, a event sponsored completely by the town, say the, say the town council, the town council has a, I don't know, what would you want to have it do?
Recreation has.
Well, we have the Christmas tree.
We have a Christmas tree lighting.
Recreation committee.
So that's done, town funds are used, a town board puts it on, a board appointed by this committee, or served for a set term, they're actually exercising authority of the town by doing so, town funds are used, they budget for it, police officers go, whatever. That's a town-sponsored event. It's different from a group who wants to use town property. Town sanctioned, in other words, you had to come to the town and say, we'd like to use your property, will you allow us to do this? Yes, obviously, it's sanctioned by the town, but it's not a town-sponsored event. So it's just a little distinction that I would make. But I think there's a way around this, there's no one suggesting that we can't figure this out, and I will be helping to help if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you.
So you'll.
Have any other questions? I just want to make sure that we've covered everything.
So we'll hold back on the approval until you come back.
You'll go to the committee and come back and let us know?
Do you want us to put it on in two weeks?
Right. Do you have to schedule a meeting? A meet on it, and then actually get more information?
Yeah, I just don't want to hold you up.
Madam President, it's been suggested, I think, that the, what's before us is that they hold the funds and we need to make a decision on, that we cannot do that. So I don't know how.
I think.
Can we, can we just continue it for the sake of whenever they get around to coming back?
I think that.
I think that.
Oh, okay.
Continue it?
I think that, Joan, and I'm going to pull the counsel, because I think Counselor Driggs's point is a good one, that.
As a matter of policy, right now.
As a matter of policy, it does seem as though that our town solicitor is advising us very clearly on the funds portion of this. So I don't, I don't know, I guess it's up to the council, because as the solicitor said, we could override, we could, you know, override it as a policy. But are, do we agree that we are following the, going to follow the town solicitor's advice and would ask the group to make arrangements as soon as convenient?
I would, I would move.
It's not on the agenda for a vote, but I guess, I think we should let the committee know, we don't want them to go back and discuss, well, we don't want to do that, and we're saying, well, we're following the solicitor, so it.
I think they get the sense of where the council is, I think.
Yeah.
Is anyone objecting to that?
I think it's on, it's on in terms of town-sponsored, so I would, I would move that we follow the solicitor's advice, that the town doesn't have the ability to sponsor events like this and use, and use our facilities as a banking.
Although, that's not really on the agenda.
It's a broad interpretation of sponsored, but it was something that was brought up as one of the issues, so I think you get the sense of where we are.
Yeah, I think that.
We'd like to continue the item until the next meeting.
That's fine.
Is that okay?
Continue the discussion about the funds that.
Madam President.
Yes, John.
I make a motion to continue item 11A until the next meeting.
Look, you have answers by then.
Okay.
But I, didn't I have a motion to make?
Well, yeah, actually.
There was no second, though.
Well, that's, I have to admit, that's because I did, I did stop and ask the question, it wasn't on the agenda, so, so I did interrupt that process there. So Counselor Driggs has a motion that says.
To follow the solicitor's advice to make it clear that the town cannot be used as a banking for a private group.
For purposes of a town-sponsored event. I think they've covered it on the agenda.
For purposes of a town-sponsored event.
For this event, let's keep it to this event.
To this event.
To this event.
To this event.
Which is before us.
Okay, so, there's a motion, is there a second? There's a second, any other discussion?
Madam President.
Yes, John.
And as it pertains to this, I think it's been expressed by the people requesting this agenda item, that they would like to continue this until the next meeting. I think that that's the direction that we should go, give them a chance to actually be prepared to answer some of the questions that we came up with here, come up with an actual plan as far as how they're going to get the funds out of the town treasury. In short, I think that this motion is premature, and that it sounds to me like the Tiverton Celebrates or Tiverton Days Committee is going to come up with an answer for us before the next meeting. And I intend to vote no because of that.
That's fair enough. I will say this, though, I do think that, I think that the solicitor has given us advice, I'm not sure that, with all due respect to the committee, that there's anything that they're going to come back to me that's going to change my mind, that I agree that this is not a good policy. On the other hand, if the committee, if the solicitor feels like a little bit of time is okay for them to sort out how they would arrange to have the funds transferred, and where they would like to have them transferred to, and work that out with the treasurer, I think that that.
It's a different issue, it's a different issue than where the funds are now.
Right.
You can always revisit the vote, you can always change your mind. If you vote no, if you vote yes today, and you come up with a great argument next meeting, you can always change the vote.
Well, if you end up, okay.
So, so there's a motion, there is a motion and a second on the table to ask the committee to make arrangements, or, how was it?
No.
To follow the solicitor's advice, that we can't be a banking for a private organization for town-sponsored events.
For this organization, for this organization to be a town-sponsored event.
Right.
Madam President.
Why just this one?
Because it's on the agenda for this.
So it just has to be specific to this one right now?
Yes, John.
If I might, if I might add one item, if this is a policy that this council is going to have, and it's going to apply to all organizations, I don't necessarily feel comfortable having a vote today to make a singular policy that applies to this organization. If we're going to make a policy that we're not going to be a banking institution for any organization, then we should have a separate agenda and item, and a separate discussion about a policy that we will not be a banking institution for any organization. So, again, that's.
I'm not aware of any other organization that does this.
We just brought up the garden club, I mean, we don't know.
The only thing that I'm suggesting is that we're tying it to this agenda item, that this is the only thing that's before us, and the testimony before this council was that, in order to be a town-sponsored event in the past, that the town required, or at least the suggestion was, the town required that they put the money into the town treasury. So we're reacting to that very specific testimony by this applicant before us, and that's why I'm limiting into that, because I'm trying to stick it to the, stick to the agenda and not make a board of policy. I agree with you, it could be a good idea to pass an ordinance at a later date, but right now, the only thing that's before us is this policy based upon the testimony that was given by the event organizer.
Madam President?
Yes.
I think that this organization understands what the solicitor said, and I think it's been a consensus. I think if they were going to make this just specific to this organization, I don't think that's right. I think we should have a policy that, because we don't know who's going to come next week, and then we have to make another, we have to make a vote on that one. So I think we should just, at some point, put on an agenda, make a policy that is to all private organizations, and I don't, and I think it's premature to do it now.
Okay, so we could do that for the next agenda, I'll ask the solicitor.
The vote's there.
I just want to ask the solicitor, if we were to vote on that as a general policy next week, I'm assuming that it becomes effective sort of immediately, and it doesn't, it.
Would be an ordinance, I guess it would be an ordinance.
Has to be an ordinance, I think.
I mean, I don't know, well, the treasurer herself could decide.
Well, I mean, if it's an ordinance, that's going to take weeks to advertise, so let's think about this. I'm actually, I think that, I think.
Let's stick to this agenda, I'm now talking about how.
Yeah, let's stick to this agenda.
We have a vote, a motion or a second.
Move the motion.
Move the motion.
There's a motion and a second right now to follow the solicitor's advice regarding this particular, regarding this particular situation, because that's what's on the agenda in front of us regarding not holding funds at, in the treasurer's office at town hall. There's a motion and a second, all in favor? All opposed? Okay. And you're going to come back to us after you guys have talked about the.
Would you like to have this item continued?
Yes, we can continue it, although.
Do you need to vote?
Yeah, we do need to vote to continue. I do have a question, if you're going to continue, though, because we know what the events are, but there aren't the actual applications with it. So if we continue this, and you want to be approved, I guess you'd just make it a different agenda item, yes, no?
You can supplement the record.
You can supplement the record, okay, I just didn't want to make it complicated. So in that case, do I have a motion to continue item 11A?
Madam President.
Till, to a date to be named in the future? Or next meeting?
Yep.
Okay, next meeting.
I'd like to make the motion to continue item 11A to the next meeting.
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor? Okay, we'll see you next time.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Joan. Thank you, Joan. Item B, Counselor Hilton, permission to advertise public hearing on amendment to code of ordinances, floodplain management program, chapter 67-2, applicability for language update per Rhode Island Emergency Management Association requirements and building official comments. So just to let you know, we got notified by FEMA that our flood panels, the firm panels, have to be updated in our ordinances to reflect some new panels that are dated June 19, 2020, it's a requirement. So I put this on the agenda because it's, you know, it's an ordinance change, so it requires advertising, comments from the building official, Mr. Moore.
Yes, this is just normal procedure for FEMA.
Yep.
And we partner with them with the Federal Emergency Agency. And they're really going to change three panels, I think. They've done it in 2013 and 2010, and they keep tweaking them over time. So they ask us, they tell us what to put in the ordinance.
They do.
And we basically do it.
Yep. Any comments or questions from the council?
Madam President.
Yes, John.
I'd like to make a motion to grant permission to advertise a public hearing on amendment to code of ordinances, floodplain management program, chapter 67-2, applicability for language update per Rhode Island Emergency Management Association or Agency.
Second.
Any other questions? The only comment that I will make is that the due date for this, for the ordinance update.
It's April, right?
No, it's, it's, they're effective June 19, 2020. So it does give the town clerk a little bit of time to advertise, so if there's something else that she's, as long as we can have the public hearing and adopt these by then, if you have something else you're advertising and want to piggyback it with to save money, that's okay with me.
You only have to advertise it once?
It's a separate one, I thought it was the zoning one.
Yep, and like, and as long as we adopt this by June, June 19, we have time for the advertising and the public hearing and the vote, then we can do it whenever. There's a motion, a second, any other comments? All in favor? Okay. Rick Rogers, Council President Hilton, update on how we're coming on our recycling center, and do you need anything from us, Mr. Rogers?
Hi, good evening, thank you. At this time, I do not need anything, or DPW does not need anything from the town council. The last two weeks, PAR has been revisiting the station layouts with an eye towards increasing efficiency and safety and reducing footprint. And they've also been coordinating with the pre-engineering to provide the site stakeout for potential work that DPW could do to reduce costs. And they, of course, have been continuing to work towards the, keeping the site, as mentioned two weeks ago, to under five acres, because if we, you know, disturb more than five acres, it's a longer DEM review time. And they've been working on the stormwater design, that has to be done integrally with any station design layout changes.
Okay, any questions for Rick?
Madam President.
Yes, John.
Just a quick comment, the five-acre thing, that seems like a bit of new information to me, especially since we're citing this thing inside of our own industrial park. And then, you know, the question I do have for you is, when do we expect an update from PAR as far as what the design's going to look like? And when are they going to give us actual facts and figures? And my, the only reason why I ask that is because they've been very diligent about reengineering additional work for themselves every single year at the landfill, so I just want to make sure this doesn't become another landfill.
Right, they, to my knowledge, they really haven't done a lot of reengineering at the landfill, John, but, and the, the five acre was mentioned at the two-week-ago meeting, but I don't know exactly when they're going to give us a solid layout, but that's something we're working on. In fact, I have a conference call with them tomorrow to discuss more the options that we've been discussing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Rick. We're just going to keep getting regular updates on this, they'll be short, but we need to stay on top of this, and if the council needs to do anything, if we have it on the agenda, we'll be in a position to, to stay on top of this, so it's open.
Yes.
On time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Next item, Counselor Cook, discussion of potential RFP to hire a licensed qualified carpenter to do all the town building repairs within the estimated cost budgeted for the repair that was approved by the FTR.
This is just a concept idea. I was hoping that we could try it out, listening to all the problems where bids, people didn't get around to bidding, or bidding has to be done separately, it looks like, for each, each separate department. So I was thinking maybe this might be a more, a better idea, but that's up to the council to decide. So I was like, presently, the municipal building repairs have not been accomplished in a timely manner, which leads to further damage to the building. The DPW doesn't seem to have time to get to this. Bidding for each repair for different buildings or department requires a time-consuming process. Hiring a licensed carpenter or company to do the work on municipal buildings instead of bidding per repair would be more efficient and less time-consuming. Total of all work needed with estimates that were approved by the FTR budget and follow requirements for posting and hiring, which would be more of a global way to do it, rather than each little fiefdom. It, it just takes a lot of time. So you have someone come in and give you a, an estimate. There's so much money in, in the budgets. To pay, though, would come out of that particular budget for that item. It wouldn't all of a sudden be this, this, this big bunch of money. It would be, if you were working on the senior center, it was already bid on by the carpenter, and the money would come out of, of that money to pay the carpenter. But it, it has to be, of course, the bidding process and it, you know, whatever is decided on who would, who would get that awarded to them. And, and once again, it's just an idea. I don't know whether, how anyone feels about it. I'm just trying to get things to be repaired.
Before we get too far into this, could I ask Mr. Rogers to come back up here? And maybe he could give and let the council know how these repairs work and who does them and how they get scheduled?
Yes, thank, thank you. And always willing to listen to options, so, so thank you. But typically, on those repairs, they don't all have to go out to bid, and some of the information that comes forward isn't always accurate when people report it. For instance, the senior center was reported as having a leak that was causing damage inside. I checked, that was a month or so ago when that came out publicly, but that was an error. There was no new leak. That was a one-time incident, and it may have been the wind blowing in a particular way. So no damage has been done. And it was reported there was a big hole in the foundation. There is a hole in the exterior of the foundation, but it's not a through-and-through hole. And both of those items are being scheduled for repair. You can, of course, go out to RFP for a carpenter, but there's pluses and minuses to pretty much anything. What would be conceptual, considered acceptable work item hours to invoice? Estimates, trips for supplies, discussion time, overtime hours, cleanup time, et cetera. So if you hire somebody by the hour, who's going to be checking all their hours out? Who's going to be with them all the time? That has its own logistical problems. And what is considered, one guy might be working a lot faster and more efficiently than somebody else, so that just go out to bid has its problems. And more typically, what is done either by bid, if it's large enough, and I think the threshold might be something like 15,000, 16,000, then you have to go out to bid. But in either event, you list the work that's being done, and you come to a negotiated amount, if it's something that's under that amount. And either at the time of unforeseen circumstances or unseen rot, for instance, when that's encountered, then you either negotiate an additional amount, or you come to an agreement on what the rate will be. But they're isolated cases. And again, the, this year, the town hall repair renovations, it's only $5,000. That's all going to be done when the weather breaks. DPW rehab, that was about 5,000, there's about 1,000 left in that. The senior center renovation, again, when the renovation, when the weather breaks, we're going to be replacing the water line, installing the handicap signs, repairing some of the pavement, reshingling the back room roof, the south basement entry roof and south wall, the main building's south wall and south wing, south wall. So again, those are not large items, but they will all be done in the spring. And the fourth item was the town farm playground, and this is on the capital items. The town farm playground equipment, that depends on whether or not DEM awards the grant. That 50,000 will disappear in a, in a flash, either by matching grant or having to purchase playground equipment if the grant is not, you know, given. The other item was the DPW tractor, and that's going to be based on how the fiscal year '21 proposal for a dump truck and trailer are received. And the paving drainage account, we're going to continue the drainage work and pave the roads in the spring. And 450,000, about $455,000 is left in that account. That's going to disappear very quickly. You're, you might be getting 10 to 15 roads out of that, and they're not long roads. You can see what we did last year, and we spent about $500,000.
Rick, the paving and stuff is a little off the... I think, I think, I think we're more talking about this sort of building. Talking about wooden hammers. It, it sounds to me like you have a plan, that there's a plan. Some of these are smaller jobs, some of these are bigger jobs, and, and that you may do it all in-house, but some things you may go outside for somebody to help with.
That's correct.
On our maintenance, on our maintenance men, carpenters, all-around handyman, isn't that what they were hired for?
They do a lot of it.
Rick? That's what they do a lot of, right?
They do painting, they do...
They do shingling. They do sidewall shingling. They do some carpentry work, correct?
So if we're capable of doing it, we will do it, because that reduces costs. But if we're not, then we sub it out.
Right, okay.
So we do sub out when we need to?
Yes.
It's, it's just a concept. I just wanted to make sure you weren't over, you know, overextended and, and that, you know, there wasn't a problem.
No, thank you. We're always happy to hear alternatives.
Okay. I have a lot of, I have a lot of time. I sit around and I go, oh, how about this? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'd like a second, if I could, Madam President, just to respond to a couple of things that was just stated. The roof, five and a half years ago, I was on that roof. We were volunteering to put the roof on. That back roof had shingles that were peeling off. I used a triplex cork, and I corked the shingles back down. It'd been like that for eight years. The sidewall, you can see the nails. It does leak in the driving rain. 2016, '17 budget, we put money in. The repairs didn't get done. This year, we put money in for the roof. Repairs haven't been done, and no bids have been put out, as far as I understand.
Mr. Souza, hang on a second. I think that Mr. Rogers just explained what the plan was for the senior center going forward.
And he just said it was going to be repaired this spring, but there's been no bids to do the work.
But, but, but...
Phil and Manny are not going to get up there and do shingling in a roof. It's going to have to be a contractor. Well, I want the people to understand and the council to understand.
Well, this is your opinion, first of all.
No, it's not my opinion. It's a fact that we either have to go out to bid, or we have to hire somebody, as Mrs. Cook is talking about, to do the work. So don't mislead people.
Would you let me finish? Hang on.
No, I don't want to hear it, because you're misleading people. When you get the bids out to do the work, then I believe it'll be done.
Please have a seat. Rick?
Can we move on from this?
I would like, I would like to, I'm, we're going to move on with this, but I would like to clarify something. The state law for bidding on construction, the limit on bidding for construction, I think right now, we just went through this at the, at Grinnell's Beach. The, the state law for bidding on construction right now is like $14,000, because it follows some Boston Consumer Price Index. So anything that is below that, you don't have to go out to bid for. You are supposed to get some verbal quotes. You're not just supposed to pick a person. You are supposed to get some verbal quotes. So, you know, the sum total that's been allocated for the senior center, which is $15,000, which is more than one project.
Not one project. It was designed, that was put in there for the roof.
Mr. Souza, you're out of order. Thank you.
Look at the budget. It was put in there for the roof.
Mr. Souza, you're out of order. Thank you.
Well, excuse me. Don't say it was put in there for other things.
Mr. Souza, we can take a break if you don't want to stop, but we'd appreciate it if you would. Thank you. So this, the DPW director is well aware of what things he's got to go out to bid for and what things that he doesn't, which things his staff is going to do that Phil and Manny are going to do, and which things he might go out and hire a contractor to do. So I don't think that saying, because I would just like to clarify, that the fact that there aren't bids out there means somehow this is not going to happen. I do have confidence that if Mr. Rogers says he's got it under control and it's going to happen, and it'll be done by the end of the fiscal year, it will. Now, is there, are there any other statements that anybody wants to make on this agenda Mrs. Cook, are you set with this?
Well, I have to go by what Rick says and hope, and I'm hoping that it all gets done. That's the only reason why I did this, because there was, there was things not getting done, and then the 15,000 would go back in, and you'd ask for another 15,000. So instead of people, the FTR would then charge people again. It ended up being a 30 or 45,000 dollar job instead of a 15, because it kept going in the general fund, like it costs more.
Right, but I, I think...
For the same thing.
But Mr., but, but the DPW director says that they have a plan for spending and utilizing these funds as they were allocated.
The budget does say senior center renovations, 15,000.
It says senior center renovations.
It doesn't specify what it's doing.
Item E, then. We'll move on to item E. Councilor Cook, Councilor Driggs, discussion of reestablishment of town council resolution, municipal facilities committee, and/or establishment of a municipal facilities maintenance committee. Duties, membership, and charge of committee, vote to proceed with necessary enabling resolutions. Councilors.
I came up with this concept idea. First, I went in to see if there was any committee that was doing this, and I noticed that there had been a municipal facility committee, it expired June 30, 2012. I thought, well, it was before. There was no other information that I could look at to see what exactly they did.
Or why it was discontinued.
It was just sort of a footnote. So I, with all the, you know, people that seemed to be interested in the buildings and, and follow-through, I thought maybe this might be a, a good way for people that are interested in, in taking care of, in helping with the buildings and, and working with the building inspector would be something they might be interested in. So currently, municipal buildings have not been being repaired in a timely manner, causing further damage to the buildings. Reinstating this committee would be a good solution. This committee would be volunteer and would work with the building inspector to do a full assessment of municipal buildings, repairs needed, anticipated cost and follow-through for a resolution of repairs in a timely manner within the budget. Duties and responsibilities and who to report to would be determined by the town council and discussion and possible vote, or whatever the council feels they want to do.
Madam President?
Yes, Joan?
So I would just like to say, I think that this is a great idea. Interestingly enough, I have been working on a draft of justice resolution, but it hasn't come to the council yet, because it's not ready for primetime. And the only comment I would make is that I think that our time on the council here, we have a lot of agenda items, would be best spent if we were discussing and taking action on actionable items, rather than just talking conceptually about things. And, you know, at least for me, I would appreciate, you know, if we're going to do something like this, to see an actual resolution so that we can discuss and make decisions and proceed with. That, that's just my only comment. I mean, I've, at this point, without seeing a specific resolution in front of me, I think it's premature for us to be having this discussion and debate, you know. I think if, you know, both you and Councilor Driggs have, you know, time on your hands and can draft a, a sample resolution, I know Councilor Driggs is a former attorney or is a current attorney, member of the bar or something, you know, maybe you guys can get together and, and, and put something together. Rather than me.
Yeah, Donna, there was a study done in '12.
But the thing is, when you do this study and we get a report of what needs to be repaired or replaced, there has to be some commitment by the town and the budget committee to do it. And that, that's part of the problem. The cost gets to be so big, and we try to get some of it done, and then we don't get it budgeted. So the, the, I agree that this is a great idea, but there has to be a commitment made that we're going to do it, because this poor facilities committee takes time and effort to do this, and then we say, oh, we can't afford it, and then we're not going to get it on the budget, and the alternative budget won't have it on there, and then things go to hell in a handbag because of it. So there has to be some kind of commitment made by everybody that if this facility committee works this hard to do this and diligently to do it, that we are willing to put the commitment in. And that's been the problem all along.
Well, I think, yeah, I, I agree, Denise. I do feel that if there is this facilities committee, and I'd be glad to work up a, a resolution or proposal that we could actually vote on, I think, I think it does make sense. And certainly, this volunteers, people who do volunteer and bring forward their suggestions, and they work with the building official, I think at that point, the building inspector, I think at that point, when it comes to the budget, the budgeting, this is something that is put before the budgeting. I agree, they're going to have to approve it, and they maybe have to prioritize, but if you don't have it in front of you, you don't even think about it. So that's why I think it's a good idea.
I just want to follow up on, thank you. I hear what you're saying, Councilor Edwards, but I, I'm not going to do a resolution on my own without, without the council saying they even like the idea. So that's why I did it this way. I mean, to just decide on my own to do a resolution and no one's in favor of it didn't make any sense to me. So if, if everyone thinks it's a good concept, then we could say, yes, let's do a resolution, and someone could write, if you want Nancy to write her up, or if John wants to write it up, that's fine with me. I just brought it forward to speak about, because we're not allowed to just speak about anything. And then if you think it's a good idea, we, we go, yes, let's do the resolution. That, that's why it was done that way. Yep.
So I would just like to clarify one thing about the municipal facilities committee, and I, I think this is a little important. That committee was not so much involved in the, the maintenance of the buildings. They were much more focused on a long-term strategic plan for facilities. So they were looking and thinking about things like, you know, or someday we're going to need a new police station, or when do you think we're going to outgrow the fire station, or what do we do about the DPW barn? Yes, they pointed out at a high level, things that, you know, needed repair, but this was not a sort of day-in, day-out maintenance of the buildings kind of committee. That's not what they did. So that's the first thing. And I'm not opposed to the idea, and I don't think people are opposed to help, but I would really like, Councilor Edwards, I'd like to see something on paper. I think that there are people in the town who want to help with these things. I also know that, and, and I've seen it now, because I, I, I disagree with the idea that the town has not, with the money that it's had, done the maintenance that it could. I don't, I, I just don't agree that there's been money that's allocated that hasn't gone toward maintenance. It has. The problem is, the amount of money that gets allocated is very small, so there's only so much you can do. So I, I'd like to see it on paper. I'd also like to have input, you know, from the town administrator, from the building official, from the DPW director, because I've also noticed that there are lots of opinions about how things should be built and whether they're built the right way, and I don't want to make something, I don't want to see something that just turns into a whole lot of people saying that this isn't the right way to do it, or you didn't, you did it the wrong way. So something on paper would certainly be helpful.
Okay. Thank you, Donna. It's a good, it was a good suggestion.
It is a good suggestion. We'll follow through on...
So what would be the next step to make a motion to have someone do a resolution or a particular person to be a resolution? Do we go that?
Yeah.
You want to talk with Nancy? John was interested.
Yeah.
John, did you want to do it too? I mean, it's up to you. I'm not good at resolutions.
I just, I want to move through the agenda as quickly as possible, because we've got a lot of stuff to cover.
Well, I, I get that, but sometimes we need to talk about something, get something new going.
As long as there's not four of us, we're good to go.
Yep. All right. Okay, moving along, this is under my name, Councilor DEM, notice Tiberden Heights, Platte, 110, Lot 127, Fish Road, requesting permission to alter freshwater wetlands in the town of Tiberden. A vote to refer to appropriate town boards or commissions for comments. Some of you may have heard and seen that the DEM is requesting comments for a wetlands alteration permit for the Tiberden Heights development, which is, this says Fish Road, it's on the corner of Fish and Souza. It's on, it's the corner of Fish and Souza.
Across from the police station?
Northwest.
No.
You mean like, you should go towards on the gas?
The northwest corner of Fish Road and Souza Road.
Yes.
So it'd be like across from where the parking lot is.
Across, across from where they were going to, across from where they were going to build that mall.
Okay.
Across from where they're building.
Right.
Literally across the street.
So I, I believe that, I believe that the planning board has gotten a copy, but if not, what we're asking is that the council refer, and there's an entire huge set of plans, which you didn't get in your backup because it's enormous, but those plans be sent to the planning board and to the conservation commission for them to weigh in with their thoughts to respond to the DEM. So that's the request of this vote tonight.
Madam President?
Yes, John.
I'd like to make a motion to refer the DEM notice to the appropriate town boards or commissions for comments or concerns.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions? All in favor, I'm, I'm sorry.
I just had a question. So there will be copy of these plans in the town?
There are a copy of the plans in the town, yes, there are.
Because when it was the notice that they were going to be up in Providence, if I was not-
No, there's a, there's a set here and I believe Susan, there's a set in the planning board?
Yeah, actually I brought them out for a plan tonight. If you want a different presentation, I just-
No. I think, I, I think that's not so much on the agenda, but still, but the fact that they're here in the planning board for people who want to see them. So there's a motion and a second. And, and by the way, the due date on the, on the comments, Terry, is March 26th, which is not terribly long, which means that these things need to go to those boards and commissions as soon as possible. Motion is second, all in favor? Okay. William McLaughlin, town building maintenance issues and responsibility of oversight of various boards and commissions.
It's a hot topic.
Yeah, well, it's actually not a terrible idea what you had about a committee. I'd make one suggestion, John, that if you do require, have a requirement for people to be on it, you know, a few years of construction experience so that you're not getting, save yourself a lot of aggravation. It says in the agenda, I got two issues. And when I was here at the council last time, I asked to have some answers for the public and there may be a little bit of overlap with the issues, but I want to start with the library and, and the senior center maintenance. It's a case of who's responsible to make sure these repairs happen. At this point, it looks like there's nobody responsible. It's haphazardly done. And not for nothing, it's no secret, Joe Susan, I don't see eye to eye on many things, but he's absolutely right. It's been in two budget cycles to repair that roof. There is no excuse. We did this here with the town hall. It, it was literally a few thousand dollar shingling repair and seven years later, how much did it cost us to repair it? Because it was like, oh, they said they'll get to it, they said they'll get to it. This is a system that can't keep going on because in the end, it costs us a hell of a lot more money to fix something three years from now than it would cost to fix it now due to water damage and, and other various factors that can happen. So my question is, is there anybody responsible for this? Who's responsible?
Do you want me to answer you?
Yeah, well, that's what I, I came for.
So I, on the library, and I don't know if you've seen the library director's presentation, but we have a new library director, Catherine Damiani, who has done a fabulous job of sorting through the maintenance issues. It does seem that-
I have the list of the maintenance issues that they've been taking care of and actually some of them are pretty funny. There's stuff that should have been covered by errors and omissions and I don't know why the town would negotiate to pay half or something that the contractor should have, but-
They have, they have worked, including with the attorney, with the contractor to resolve as many of these issues as possible. I don't know if you saw the report that she put together, but it actually listed every single repair that she's-
I have it right here. I've gone through it, I've inspected the building.
That they've taken care, that they have taken care of.
I'll get to, no, the library is-
Let me, let me just finish. You, you asked me who's responsible. So the new library director and the new board has really stepped up to the plate in terms of sorting out the maintenance issues and are staying on top of the maintenance issues. The building official was over there recently to work with them. They're, they are planning on appropriating a certain amount of money every year to go into maintenance because they didn't really have that before in their prior fiscal planning. So I do think that there are some things to resolve, but I think when you add up the list of things that the new library director has taken care of in the last several years, she's really, you know, stepped up to the plate in terms of doing that. So who is responsible? The library and the library board is and certainly the town has the wherewithal in our budgeting process to assist them if we feel necessary and the budget committee and the citizens concur in terms of potentially making available some capital to help with their improvements. So that's who is responsible, if you're asking me that question.
Yeah, did you take double talk lessons from Adam Schiff? Bottom line is, explain why for two years, what's been in the budget, the roof hadn't been fixed at the senior center. There's not a good reason.
It's a problem.
The money's been there for two cycles. It's pretty simple. Joe, you're on the budget committee, how many, how many budgets has it been in?
All right. If you go back and you read the minutes of the budget committee, the discussion of the budget, it may have said renovation.
That's what it said.
Okay, that's what was put on the docket and that, the last time, I think it was Sanford Mattel's docket, so if you look at, but the money was put there to do repairs at the senior center and we all discussed that the priority was the back wall and the roof. So the minutes are there. If anybody wants to read the minutes from the budget committee or watch the tapes, that's what we discussed, regardless of how you want to spend it. The money was there, but, and I don't want to get into the past as much because I could really go on for an hour about-
I just wanted to substantiate, Joe, that the money's been there and there's no damn good reason that it ain't been done except somebody's got to be responsible. Apparently, there's nobody. Then we'll get to the library issue. I've actually spoke with the people from the building department and I've spoke with the people at the library and I've actually gone around and looked at the library. And what's absolutely amazing is I've never seen a construction project where there was no spec sheet available for the materials. I actually, with the help of the gentleman building inspector here, went through the actual physical plans to find some of the specs on the plans. I think you'll find that there's a lot of inferior materials that aren't up to spec. It's, it's kind of vague on it. I'd actually need to see the actual spec sheet, but where you're supposed to have what's called hardy board or cement board, you got stuff called cement particle board, not weatherproof. That's why it's flaking. Joe, I have samples right here.
Madam President, can I, can I ask a question?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna-
Basically painted paper mache.
Could you, Mr. McLaughlin and Mr. Souza, Mr. McLaughlin and Mr. Souza, could you please sit down for a minute?
Can I ask a question?
Yes, John, because I have a couple of questions here myself.
The most obvious one, of course, is, is why, why does a resident of the town, budget committee member, whatever, why do you have pieces of our building?
Exactly.
They're laying on the ground over there. They blew off during the last storm when it was real cold, these popped off because water got behind it, froze it and popped it off. This is a piece of the trim from the back of the, okay? I went there.
Well, I'm not, I'm not-
I've been going there for five years now, watching this building deteriorate and I've been screaming at the top of my lungs to try to get somebody to pay attention.
And, and like, listen, I appreciate-
So the squeaky wheel's going to get the oil now.
I, I appreciate, I appreciate that, but, but this is, this is, this is the town council, like, this is a spectacle that we have going on here, holding up pieces of a building, like, are we trying, are we a professional board or, or is this, or is this a side show?
This is for comparison. This is the inferior material.
This is to bring to attention the fact that things are not-
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on.
This is way, this is way out of order. Let me, I would, I-
Once it's out of order, because it makes you look bad.
Mr.-
I'm all done with you people.
Mr. Souza, if you don't stop, we're just going to take a break. We're going to have to do a recess.
We are going to try to put money in the budget this year to make repairs. If we had received a professional estimate from a contractor like we asked for, it would be a lot easier.
You're working out of order.
No, you're not working on it from a contractor. I bet you didn't even look at the doors of the building. Six of them that are so out of square, you can't believe it. Recession. You wonder why I get mad?
One conversation at a time. And while I, and I'm just going to say this, while I appreciate the willingness of town volunteers and citizens to be inspecting the buildings and to be commenting and all those other things, and I know that everybody's intentions are- Donna, can we have one conversation at a time? And I appreciate the good efforts of, of citizens to, to be inspecting the buildings. We do have, and, and you are certainly entitled to raise concerns, but the library building is built. The town, you know, the library, the library building committee actually hired a qualified Rhode Island licensed contracting firm that built the library. The, the life, the library board and the new director who's here have done an amazing job in the last two years. I don't know, Catherine's got a long list of things that they've been addressing in terms of issues. You can read through the list and you can see that in fact, there are some things where the contractor didn't do it perfectly and in those cases, they've gone back to the contractor, they've pushed for them to fix it and make it proper. Some of the things are just maintenance things. You're not going to build the building and not have to occasionally repair things, even if it's built with the best materials. Secondly, we have on staff our own professionals. We have our own professional building official, building inspector, who's, who inspects on behalf of the town and makes recommendations for repairs. So while I appreciate that people want to be involved and that they want to help, the idea that somehow, you know, we can pick and choose which citizens' opinions over how something should be built or how it should be repaired or if it wasn't done properly, if it was done, it is, it's, it's really not the way to do it. I do recognize that, that people want to see their money well-spent. I do recognize that they want to see the best value for their dollar. I do recognize that, you know, they want us to hire the best contractor who's going to do the best job that they can. But at the same time, this isn't sort of a self-inspection program where, you know, people should be out inspecting town buildings on their own. If you have a concern about a building or you see something that's a problem, bring it to the building official, certainly, or bring it to the town administrator. But that's, that's the appropriate place to go with that.
Madam President, can I say something? I, I am concerned because I'm certainly not a building inspector, but what's become abundantly clear over the past, for years now, but it's really coming to the fore, is that it seems like the work that was done was not acceptable and we're now seeing the consequences. And what I'm hearing is some of what were, the consequences that we're now experiencing are things that I understand people even advised us of at the time the building was literally being built. And when you get a building and you have somebody holding up, as we've been told that the ex, and I think the building official will confirm this, that the exterior trim was done with interior material that is not weatherproof. And so when the library director says weather damaged it, no, weather didn't damage it, the wrong material was used. And I think this is serious. And I don't think we can just get by with saying we're, you know, we can't just, we need to listen to people who come from the background and figure out what happened because this could be a very expensive fix-it project. That's all I-
Now, can I address this? My whole point is there's not a good system set up in this town for addressing these issues with any of the buildings in town. It's always an issue. There should be a nice, easy, efficient way to say, this needs to be done, bring it to the budget committee, get the money allocated if they, they, everybody agrees on it, get it out to bid and get it done. Now, as far as the library, she's absolutely right. You people are screwed, you're warned about some of it. I've, I've spoken with your building official, he and I both agree, substandard construction techniques used, substandard materials in some cases. Now, if you had half the brains you're supposed to have in protecting the town, you would be concerned that you could go after the insurance and have it fixed properly and not worry about the taxpayers doing it. But the bottom line is if you keep putting it off like we do with every other building in town, we did it with this very building here, and it becomes a very large cost when it could be done at a reasonable cost right now, but it has to be done, not in the fall or when the DPW director finds time among the 500 other things he's got to do. It, it needs to be addressed in a more efficient manner. There's no system set up here to do this in this town. This is why it doesn't get done. I, I can't even believe that there was a job done here where there's no material spec sheet for it. I've never seen that in my life, even on a frigging home, a regular residential home I've never seen where there wasn't a spec sheet attached to it. And there's probably a reason because the contractor screwed you on a bunch of stuff.
Mr. McLaughlin, I, I'm going to, I will tell you this, keeping in mind, and I'm not trying to pass the buck, but I'm going to say this and I'm-
Let's see if your building inspector, you disagree with anything I said?
Mr. McLaughlin, may I finish?
I want to see.
And that, you know, there was a building committee for the library. It wasn't a committee that was under the direct supervision of the town. It wasn't. And I'm not trying to, I am not trying-
Were there engineers or contractors, anybody qualified?
Let me, please let me finish. And, and I don't know exactly, I don't exactly know that process, but there was an independent building committee that had control of this project. I will say this, just now looking back, that the town should probably never build anything ever without hiring our own engineer-
Like a town planner, maybe?
Inspector. Just like on the Abutment project, right, which was a two and a half million dollar project, part of that was that there was an engineer that was there on the town's behalf every day, all day, part of that contract. So not only was there an engineering firm that designed it, but there was an engineer that was there all day, every day, working on behalf of the town, supervising the contractor. And the contractor couldn't do anything without their approval. You know, this might be one of those live and learn things where we don't ever try and build an 11 or 12 million dollar building again.
No, live and learn is where we do it right and it doesn't cost the taxpayers money.
I understand.
And this goes to, my other issue on there is the committees. They work autonomously. You have no clue, you just said yourself, the committee was doing whatever it wanted. This council, because it's a taxpayer, that, that's the taxpayers on the hook for that library, am I correct? And it's your job as the council to protect the taxpayers' money and their interests, correct? Which means you should be overseeing a committee to make sure they're working diligently in, in the right direction, not just a bunch of people standing there so they can say, I'm on the committee, who have no clue what's going on over there in the corner with the contractor. This goes on with a bunch of the committees here, which unfortunately, there's a lot of people here who want to speak tonight and I'm not going to waste more time. I will be back to bring up the issue of how there's no control, these committees that run autonomously, and in the end, it costs this town a lot of money that's not necessary. It could be well cut off and, and done right with just a few common sense applications of things.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. Would anyone on the council like to comment?
Yes, I-
Go ahead.
No, no, I was just going to say no and I'd like to move on.
No, I just wanted to-
No, I, I, what I, I think one, one of the problems is, is that nobody wants to hear bad news. You don't, you, you keep repeating history if you don't sit down and discuss why these failures are happening. It happened at Ranger School. It's hap, it looks like this is the outside of the building.
What happened at Ranger?
And if it's, the whole building is with this- And if it's, the whole building is with this failed material, the whole building's going to fail on the outside. Now, all I have to say on that is, we need to sit down and deal with history and prevent it from happening again. And to that, we would need an ordinance to say that this is the way we're gonna build buildings going forward. So we need an ordinance to stop this individual little committees that don't wanna be told what to do with multi-million dollar budgets to build a building. So I think, if I'm allowed, going forward, we're going to have to have an ordinance and we need to have it right away so that we have just what you said, an engineer or builder or someone that's there every day making sure the town's behest.
A lot of it's just common sense.
I think that's the only thing we can do right now.
Denise?
I just. Well, first of all, something Donna just said, what happened at Ranger School?
The wall.
That the walls were.
The wall was caving.
Right, right. But I do have to tell you, we did have an engineer on behalf of the school committee that did oversee it.
But why does that keep happening?
I was the president of the school committee at the time. And we had a plan, we had, it was very well supervised by the town. And, and I was just thinking about that.
This is different for the maintenance. We're talking about town maintenance issues.
So the building, the building inspector inspected all of this, in this town also.
But who was the building inspector?
It was Neil Hall, I believe, and it was inspected, just like every house is inspected as, as each project is done. Also, Mr. McLaughlin, the town administrator is in charge of the committees. And if there's a problem, it's his job to come to the town council. The town, per charter, the town administrator is in charge of the committees.
The administrator takes care of the day-to-day operations of this town. The council's responsible.
No, it's, it isn't a charter.
It isn't a.
Conversation at a time, please.
Could I just speak for, I swear it's gonna be two minutes and then John can go home, cuz that's what he wants. But, okay.
We got like eight more things to do.
So, the town administrator.
I mean, if you can't be there.
Easy, 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 easy.
One conversation at a time. Denise has the floor right now, please let her finish.
Bill, the town administrator per charter oversees the committees. He does come to us when there's a problem. If we, if we interfere with the committees without going through him, then we get charged with interference. It is his job to bring it to us.
I'm not talking about the council or the friend. It's to sit down, I've talked with some of the committee, budget committees, only seeing. You guys once all, not even all together, and I know Trish has that stuff.
That is not true.
That's not true.
You can't offer guidance.
Me and Trish.
Talk to the administrator about you guys need to be put up on the right path.
I have to say is there's a lot of things that have been.
There's rules and guidelines.
Mr. McLaughlin, Councilor Dean Meders has the floor, please let her finish.
I'm not gonna say much. All I am gonna say is people make statements that are absolutely not true. And I've been to almost every budget committee meeting and so has Trish. And we have given our input on, on things. I've been here from the law, I was, I came at the end of the library being built. But I know there was concerns. It went through the town administrator, went through the building inspector. As a council, we gave it to the right people and trusted that they made the right decisions. I'm not a builder, I'm a nurse. So if my building instruct, inspectors tell me, yes, what they're saying is not true, I have to believe that. And that's what happened back then. So that, it's not that we did this on purpose, cuz we listened to the experts at the time.
We need to set up a process so it doesn't keep happening.
And I, and I don't disagree with you.
Joe, did you wanna say something?
Yeah, when you, when you pay for half inch board and you get eighth inch board, which is interior, I think there's a problem. Someone should be overseeing the project on a daily basis, especially something that big.
But there was somebody, there was somebody there.
Well, obviously he didn't do a good job because.
He did have a project there.
It's not even that, Joe, it's.
Miss, okay.
Yeah, I know, it is, one's interior.
Mr. McLaughlin, the comments have to, have to go through the chair. And so, so please, please stay in order. Mr. Provost, I would really like to wrap up this topic. But have you got something that you would like to add to this?
Thank you. I think he has a wonderful idea and I think you should pursue it. And it would be good, as an aside, if you weren't also condescending. I think a lot more would happen.
Okay, Ms. Mr. Provost.
Provo.
Provost?
Provo.
Provost, Mr. Provost, you know, part of the rule here is that, that people are supposed to be respectful to each other, so.
That's what I was suggesting.
Well, but when you refer to us as condescending or when people yell, they're not being terribly respectful.
I didn't yell, so don't throw that out on me.
I'm not saying that you did.
No, but you threw that in the same sentence. Which infer is that?
What are we doing here?
Your turn.
What are we doing here?
This is now.
This, this.
This is.
You are not.
You need to, you need to stay at the podium, please, sir. Mr.
No.
You are a person. This is.
All right, all right, all right.
Madam President.
Listen, we are way off the topic. Okay, we're way off, hold on, let me, let me finish. I'm, excuse me, I'm the parliamentarian.
Thank you.
We are all off, I'm the parliamentarian here. I'm the parliamentarian. I make sure of the meeting. You got it? Sorry. Okay, we are way off topic. You are getting a little close to council members here.
Oh, God forbid, I took a shower and everything.
That's good, that's good, so did I. You need, you need to stay at the podium. I think we've exhausted this topic. It was only out for discussion. We've had a lengthy discussion. I would suggest, Council President, that we move on.
I would agree. Does anyone have an objection to moving on?
Not in the slightest.
Who mumbled that?
We're moving on. Councilor Edwards, industrial park projects update request from planning board. I believe Susan is here.
Madam President, if I may. The reason why I put this item on the agenda is it came to my attention that we have a couple of projects that have seemed, that seem to have stalled. And I spoke briefly with the administrator. It sounds like we have an issue within our ordinance or the way our ordinance is constructed surrounding the industrial park, that these projects aren't moving along expeditiously. And I wanted to get the planning board's input, or more specifically, yours as the administrative officer, as to how we can address that issue if one does exist. Because I think the purpose of the industrial park is for us to be able to essentially have projects that are shovel-ready, come in, get them off the ground, get them the permits, get them in the, get them in the door and get them paying taxes.
Right, okay. Susan Gil. We have two projects currently in the business park. One is advantage storage. That one has gone through master plan approval. I think the decision is just, is, is just pending to being recorded. The planning board agreed that, given the location that's on the corner of Progress and Industrial Way, fronting on Route 24, that even though within the planned development park ordinance, it would be eligible for that, given the staffing of the planning department at the time this last summer, given that the building official was relatively new, learning from past experiences of projects in the industrial park trying to be expedited through the process, found that it was not a very effective way to do it. The planning board agreed with the applicant at the concept plan, planning board meeting, that it would go as a major land development for full public hearing process to allow the town, the people in the town, as well as the planning board, to hear from the public, given that it fronts on Route 24, given it's the industrial park, the history of, just the whole, I guess the whole history of the industrial park. We just wanted to let the townspeople have the opportunity to know what was going on. Otherwise, through the expedited review process, it comes to the planning board once for a very preliminary review and then it goes to the building official. After that, it is the building official's responsibility to oversee the entire project, unless at such time, they determine, he refers it back to the planning board for further review. We just felt that, given the staffing in both the planning and building office, that that probably was not in the best interest of the town and/or the applicant. So we did do the concept plan with the advantage storage. They agreed to go through that major land development process. We did approve the master plan. So we're just on that one, waiting for them to submit their preliminary plan, which is the full engineering details, and then we will schedule an advertised public hearing process to review that one. So that one's on track, as far as I know. The other one is Bill Sales at the back of the business park. This summer, concept plan was submitted. It came before the planning board in September. We discussed it, given that a portion of the property is in the Stafford Pond watershed overlay district, we requested an environmental review statement, given the nature of this being another, we felt that it was a project that maybe would impact residents of the town, given the nature of the, the wood burning and the kilns and all that, and particularly being so close to the pond, that we wanted to go for the full public hearing process again to allow the entire planning board, the review of it, to make sure that everything was done in accordance, to make sure that, that the final plans get recorded in land evidence, that decisions are written, decisions are recorded. If, if shorties are required, you know, that's, otherwise, all the responsibility of those steps fall on the building official, who is already a little overextended and who is new to the town. Since then, we did the concept plan review. There's, when I came on board again in January, the next day, I contacted the attorney for that because I didn't know where things had happened since our September meeting. And we started an email conversation. At that, at our meeting, we agreed at that meeting with the planning board that it would again go for a major land, as a major land development with a full public hearing process. They left that meeting, they weren't totally thrilled, but they agreed to that. Since that time, they have not submitted a master plan application. You know, I've been in touch with him a couple of times. He's, he's posed some questions. I've, I've attempted to respond to them. And I am just waiting for him to produce, you know, the applicant to submit a master plan application. I don't go looking for work, so I don't contact them and say, when is it coming? I just wait for it to show up and then we begin the process. So that's where we're at with it. We're, we're not trying to stall anything, we're trying to get it through. It's the responsibility of the applicant to submit the work to us.
Totally understand. I guess the, so it sounds to me like in both instances that there was a mutual agreement to go through a elongated process in order to get something done in the industrial park, rather than an expedited process.
Right, they weren't totally thrilled, I would tell you that much. But it is both the, when it goes through expedited review, it's the building official, the administrative officer, the chairman of the planning board and the town planner who make up the body of that oversight committee.
So it's you and the building official?
Correct. Which I don't think, and before it was Attorney Fabbish and the building official, who were both new. And, and, you know, Ms. Fabbish wasn't an experienced administrative officer. So we felt, that's why we felt that it was in the best interest of the town to have it go before the full planning board, that had more experience, more eyes on the project and would be able to make sure that things were done correctly on behalf of the town. Where, our interest is always on behalf of the town. That's what we're there for. We're not trying to slow anything up. I'm willing to talk to them in my position as administrative officer, but like I say, I don't call them up and ask them for work. I wait.
Yeah, thank you.
Madam President, I just have one question. So I remember when he was before us, as an inter, Bill Sales I'm talking about, as an interest in the industrial park, before the town council. And we had a lot of concerns about the wood. I remember a lot of discussion about what he was planning to use that space for and the, the wood burning and the cutting, I think, and, you know, heavy. So I was sort of with the understanding that when we approved, that he was set to go. I mean, why, it seems like another level has been put on him after.
My understanding is the council is in the business of selling them the property. You know, it's like when it comes to us, we're then put in the position, we can't then deny them, you know, their application, because we understand that the council has approved this project to go forward. But what our duty, our job to the town is to make sure that what they're proposing is within the subdivision regulations and the zoning ordinances and the comprehensive community plan of the town. And that's what we review. We're not deciding if they can have it or not have it. We're, we go into it because the council has, basically going into purchase and sale agreement with them, that it's going to happen, that it's, that it's there. But they have to propose a building that conforms to the ordinances and the subdivision regulations of the town. They can't just build whatever they want.
Is there a chance that it won't? And they will have bought the property for nothing?
No, I mean, I think, we just, we just work with them to get them to conform. If, if, I mean, every project that comes before us requires some amount of revisions to be, whether it's stormwater, whether it's setback requirements, you know, whatever it is that the planning board has to review, we just make sure, but we work with them to get them there. And we know that we're not going to bring them in and then deny their, their application. We'll, we'll work to get them there. And, you know, it's not gonna be that far, far removed from what they're proposing. It's just to make sure that it conforms, cuz we don't have the authority to grant them things that they're not allowed to do.
Actually, I, I'm not even sure to tell you the truth that the Bill Sale property has closed because we granted that, that purchase and sale agreement was based on their getting all of their planning and zoning approvals. And, and, well, I don't, you know, actually, this is, would be, if the administrator here, I would ask that because we actually gave them a certain amount of months that they were supposed to have those done in, in order to close that deal. I don't know that that deal's ever gone hard because they, and they did understand that when they were buying the property for us, that it was their responsibility to know that they would then have to go to planning and potentially need zoning relief and that, that all we're doing is selling them the property. They still have to go through the process. So I don't even know that that, that deal is closed. I do have a question for Susan. We've done expedited review one other time in the industrial park.
Yes.
Do you know how long the expedited review process took for that one?
Um, probably a couple of years. Couple, a couple of years.
So, so we have an expedited review process, it's not terribly expedited.
The couple of times that, I just, the couple of times it did work well were for smaller projects. The lifespan building up on Main Street, we did that way. And the Dollar General, we did over on Crandall Stafford Road, whatever. We did those, we took those, like smaller ones. When we have a stable staff, I think, you know, the expedited review process works really well in a town that has a full-scale staffing right now. And where we've been for the last several years, it's very difficult, other than small projects, because of where the responsibility and just kind of knowing the rules of the town, being familiar with things and, and just the whole process. In addition to that whole ordinance, Article 20 is not a well-written ordinance, it needs to be rewritten. But, and I think the concept plan, the town is still, was still listed as the owner. It was the applicant, you know, the applicant was listed, but it was the, the town, I think, is still. And I, as far as I know, I haven't heard otherwise, that the town still owns the property.
Mr. Edwards, any more questions?
So, the only thing I would say, I don't have any more questions. The only thing I would say is that it sounds to me like we have a breakdown with both the staffing level, gotta find a planner, and we have a breakdown with whatever the process is and how it interacts with our ordinance. And in my opinion, we have to do something to address those so that, you know, we aren't broadcasting to the world that, hey, come to Tiverton. And even if we give you an expedited process, it's gonna take you two years to get your project off the ground cuz that's not gonna help us sell parcels in the, in the industrial park.
Right, of course not. I just wanna know if these, the sales agreement has expired. I don't know the answer to that.
I don't, I don't know.
Usually stuff is six months.
We can check.
Right, right, yeah, I'm sure Jan would have that information. That's where it would be, I guess.
I just wanna add my two cents. I, I think the planning board and the planning staff has done a pretty good job based upon the very limited staff we had. There's no question, by my reading of the ordinances and the regulations, that yes, there was intended to be an expedited review at the disindustrial park. But I, I think because of the staffing levels and because of the turnover in that department, we haven't been able to do that. But I agree, the town should and has already made a decision that those, that that park needs to get an expedited review. And, and I think that's our intent to do so. It does give up some power from the planning board, but that's what the town decided they wanted to do, so. But I think once we get the staffing levels up, we'll be able to handle that a little bit more expeditiously.
Okay. Anybody else?
Nope.
Okay, thank you, Susan. Next item is item I, under my name, possible appointment of Town Clerk Nancy Mello as acting administrator pursuant to Charter Section 504.
I think we should just table this pending executive session and then we can come back out.
Okay. Do I need a vote for that?
No.
Okay. Town clerk, request funding for 2020 New England Municipal Clerks Institute and Academy for Deputy Clerk attendance July 11th through 17th, 2020, $1,075.
So I put this on the agenda because there's an opportunity to send the deputy clerk towards getting her municipal certification. The cost of that program, it, this is for the, it's a one-week program. I think she put it, it's in New Hampshire at Plymouth State University. I will say this, there is, if the council feels that the budget. I will say this, there is, if the council feels that the budget requirements this year would not allow for that kind of money to be spent there, I can apply for a grant. I first have to approach the council to see if they choose to pay for it, or I will apply for a grant.
You sure that's not the-
That's a good chance.
I still know we're not gonna pay for it.
You sure she's not going, you sure she's not going to the Bahamas? 'Cause she's, she's told me.
No, it actually takes, she's got this for week, it's a very good program, it's a three-year program. I can't say for sure we'd have a grant for three years, but we're trying hard to get the grant for this first year. But the grants are conditional on the fact that you've approached your town for funding, and for whatever reason, we may not be able to afford to fund that.
So you have to do three years? If she just does one year, she's-
To complete, to be certified as municipal clerk, it's a three-year program. Yes.
Sue.
And there's a lot of other courses to go along with it, but for this.
Madam President? Do we have the funds in the council contingency?
That's what I was just-
I, I think the council contingency fund is getting kinda skinny, 'cause we just took the APSME raises out of it, and we just transferred $9,000 for some, for the building permit stuff, that, the fees that we had, and so-
This number doesn't look right.
So, so could we suggest to the clerk that she apply for a grant?
Yeah.
So, you're saying that you don't have the funding this year?
Yeah, that gives you the right to go for a grant?
We don't have the funding this year.
No, we don't have it.
The treasurer's hiding behind the post over there.
We haven't had any snow.
So you're gonna apply for a grant?
This number is totally- Yes, definitely apply for a grant. It's actually, it's up to me.
Okay, okay.
Item K, the town administrator, possible vote to ratify the proposed three-year contract with Teamsters July 1st. I would like to table that until after executive session, if that's okay. And then other items, announcements, and comments under the town solicitor, there are three.
Just a quick update, so there are three pending open meetings, apropos request, the town has responded to both the Cook request and the Mr. Katz's request regarding the town, the town council, and then after I responded, we got a third requ, excuse me, a third complaint, which is currently open. The town has not yet responded to the Katz versus, versus Tiverton Board of Campus' open meeting complaint, so, but all the other town responses have been filed to number one and two, and now in the hands of the Attorney General for the final decision.
Subject to response, right?
Subject to response. I, Mr. Katz submitted a response today to his, I believe Ms. Cook asked for an extra couple days, and she'll, she'll get that.
Okay.
So it's time for closed executive session. Do I have a motion for going to executive session?
I'd like to make a motion to go into closed executive session under A, Council President Hilton, RIG, uh, RIGL 42465A1, 42465A1, discussion of job performance, character of physical or mental health of a person or persons, provided that such person or persons affect, affected may require that the discussion be held in open session. Town administrator notice given. B, Councilor Cook-
Second, yes.
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 Yes.[1753.13]